Texas pledge. It's all. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. All right. Next up is public comments. I've just got a couple of them really quick. We've got, we're gonna pull item number 6.2. Discuss it on a later date and in the ever-ending discussion about COVID, we're, we're, the hospital, hospitalization rates are slightly going up, but it, it, it's, uh, so everyone, please be safe. Anybody else from the board have anything, from council, have anything to add?
Mayor, I'd like to give a shout out. Sergeant Mike Schultz and all the women and men in blue. This, this past weekend, starting Friday about, my phone started blowing up Friday about 10 o'clock. And went through till Sunday. I had five calls. All five were answered within minutes. I mean, uh, one, one pool party, parking on the sidewalk, parking on the street. But the, the, the SPI PD was, was proactive and I just wanna call that out and, and have it on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the board have any public comments?
I've also gotten a lot of calls regarding the parking and I'm glad they have stepped up. I agree with Ken. You've got a job well done.
Deal. Anybody from staff have any public comments? All right, from the audience have any public comments?
Where does Alex?
I think we've got Jeff Clor here who's gonna.
Mayor, City Council, Alexandria's Director, got Jeffrey Clark from Equipment, giving an update on Laguna Boulevard.
Okay, great.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. Just a quick update. We are in a good part. It, uh, phase one completed in the next three to four weeks. We had some hiccups with underground utilities. Somewhat of an archaeological dig that kinda pushed us out a little bit. We've got most of that stuff figured out and addressed. We had a flex base issue which unfortunately in South Texas, the material for flex base, which was spec'd out in the project, is no longer available in South Texas. It's mined out of the Yucatan and it is just, the vendor just does not have it anymore. So we've had to change to a locally sourced material and we have gotten that, we started bringing that in to the project and within the next three to four weeks, we should have everything buttoned up in phase one. From curb and gutter to new pavement.
Great. Thank you very much. Well, we can't remember this as a presentation, we can't.
Oh.
It's not discussion, but if you ask me afterwards, because we had a little bit of talk beforehand, so, okay.
Great.
All right, thank you. Anybody else from the audience have any public comments or announcements? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to items number four, which is four point, we have the first one, it's 4.1, which is presentation and recognition of the South Potter Island Chamber of Commerce. Ken, this is your item, so.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to recognize and congratulate the Chamber of Commerce not only for their continued hard work and dedication, but also their recent achievement. The Chamber attended the Texas Chamber of Commerce Executives in June and brought home the first place award. They won first place statewide, their 2022 Official Guide in South Potter Electronic Publication. Just a super award. It, it kinda puts another star on us. Chamber has always been active in community events pertaining to, and planning and executing their objectives. I've had the pleasure of serving with Alita Bagley on the council for many years and she's just, you know, an outstanding as well as Ms. Harville. Known her for many years and her husband happens to be from my hometown, San Manito. So again, I'd like to thank the Chamber for all that they do. I'd be remiss if I didn't remind everyone of the 41st Annual Ladies Kingfish Tournament, August 12th and 14th, and I believe we have a representative of the Chamber here, Mayor. I'd like to say few words.
Great. Good afternoon. I'm Lonnie Gillahan. I'm here representing the Chamber of Commerce. It was a pleasant surprise and Ken, very, thank you very much. Chamber of Commerce works very hard. Most of you are aware that the, the mission of the Chamber of Commerce is, is pretty simple. It's supporting and promoting our interests of our local businesses and our community. And I'm extremely proud to be part of that Chamber of Commerce. It has over 400 members, which is growing month by month, it seems. And again, I want to echo what Ken said was, not only did we win first place for the annual guide that went out for the South Potter Island, this is the second year in a row and it's a, uh, it's an award that's given and we're competing against all the Chamber of Commerce's across Texas. So it's a pretty big deal and we, even though we have a staff of a huge staff of three, I believe we do an outstanding job and I'm extremely proud of the, the staff that we've got. We also won first place for the, uh, the new digital weekly newsletter we put out. So again, both of those are good examples of, of what the Chamber does to promote our local businesses and I also want to recognize that the Chamber, I think, is successful because they build, we have really strong relationships with our local businesses, our government and the city council. So I can't thank you enough. Thanks.
Thank you, Lonnie. I'd, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Beverly E. Martin. She's there 24/7. She she runs a tight ship.
All right. Next up is 4.2, which is presentation regarding the fiscal year 2022-23 CBB budget. Normally, we would do this in a workshop to save time and combine it into one meeting. We have Rodrigo here today.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I have a presentation here. Let me open it. As you might recall, Rodrigo Jimenez, CFO. I always forget to introduce myself. As you might recall, a couple of weeks ago, we have our first budget workshop where we cover all the city's funds, including the general fund. Last city council meeting, the EDC presented their budget. So this is the time to go over the CBB, the last missing part of the budget presentation. So attached to your packet, there are a report with about 30 pages with all the details. I'm gonna hit the highlights on, on, on that report, which is basically that this budget, the CBB budget has revenues in excess of expenditures by $3.6 million, meaning revenues are higher by, are higher than expenditures by $3.6 million. And the reason behind is because in the past two years, we have held the model tax increases, significant increases. And we're expecting to, we're budgeting $12.3 million, which is slightly lower than what we are expecting to collect this year. We just put a contingency there in the event we have, uh, some challenges with economy. So, but 12.3 is a, is a conservative amount. To summarize, $12.6 million in total revenues, expenditures $9 million. And if we take a look at the, at the revenue detail, we see that 98% of all the revenue comes from taxation, all the model tax. There's a small portion coming from the rental of the CBB, which is $215,000 and $36,000 on, on a small contribution from miscellaneous revenues. Unlike the general fund, which the majority of the general fund, its payroll cost, for the CBB, it's only 18% of the total budget. Actually, the biggest budget of the CBB is marketing with $4.1 million. And you can see this, you can see the size of each budget better in this chart, where you can see that marketing and events marketing combined accounts for almost 57% of the budget. The next bigger department is sales and administration with 24%. And the convention center, the actual facility, it's almost 18%. Then we have small amounts allocated for the visitor bureau and the historical museum facility. Personnel, there's no new positions being proposed. There is a 3% cost of living adjustment for all CBB employees, like for the rest of the city. The cost of that is about $38,000. In terms of the visitor center, it's a small budget. The main expense is the rental, the rent, the yearly lease for $20,000 for the offices at the multimodal. That includes maintenance and, and utilities. We also have a SPI Historical Museum Facility. We're tracking all these expenses on, on separate line items. We budgeted $40,000 for building maintenance, the exterior, utilities and, and insurance. Sales and administration, the second biggest department. We, we have convention services for $175,000. It includes complimentary services like transportation, budgets, giveaways, et cetera. Promotional items for $50,000. The airport shuttle service, I understand that in the next few months, we're gonna have an RFP for that service. So we're budgeting $70,000 for that. And trade short fees for 70, $70,000, excuse me. In good news for sponsorships, the budget for total, for sponsorship is $650,000, which is an increase of 53% or $225,000. The, and in addition to that, we have eco tourism sponsorships for $50,000 and fireworks for $100,000. I think we increased it by 20, the fireworks. It used to be 80. Also, at the request of the CBA Board, the total budget for marketing, it's, has increased by half a million dollars. When, when comparing, comparing original budget for this year and this proposed budget, the original proposed budget for this year was 3.6. Now we're proposing 4.1, half a million dollars increase. The majority of that is media placement, $2.5 million, followed by production and content development and professional services. The actual facility of the convention center, as you know, we have what we call the reserve study. We have the study for all facilities and to keep up with the maintenance. This year, I met with the CBB director and the CBB manager and we are not budgeting anything, we're not following that study because currently the CBB director is making an assessment on the facility. So we don't wanna put money where, you know, might not be spent, or we might spend even more. So he's assessing the facility, tying that with expansion. So in our conversations, we agree that if, you know, he's okay with this budget as well as the other budgets, we met two weeks ago and he reviewed them. But if more money is needed to attend for some unexpected issues, he will come back to city council requesting additional funding. What we added was a 20% increase of $34,000 for insurance. It has grown, it has gone up significantly. It's about $34,000, like I said. So that's a quick, brief summary. Like I said, there is a 30-page report with all the details of the CBB. At this point of time, we have reviewed all the budgets. We will be ready to submit the budget to you next week on the July 27th special city council meeting in order to comply with the 60 days requirement by our Home Rule Charter. At that time, I will also have the property tax rate, tax rates that we need to calculate per, per state law. So that's, uh, that's pretty much it. Try to make it simple, to the point.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much. All right, next we'll move to approved consent agendas or a motion to approve consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.7.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next up, six, we're gonna have a regular agenda. Item six, we'll go to 6.1, which is discussion and possible action to accept the United States Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration 1.5 million dollar grant for the construction of the Historic Museum of South Potter Island. Joe has this on here, but you know, congratulations to the Historic Museum and everybody. I'll let Joe take over.
Well, let Mr. Frankie take over. He's, he's, he's here and he put, he put, he put the work in.
Go right ahead.
This is a special time because we didn't know if this was ever gonna happen, but it did happen. We're very pleased. We have been awarded a grant from the EDA, an amount of a billion and a half dollars. And tonight, we need to officially accept that award and confirm the city's participation in 20% matching funds. So I'm not sure whether you do that in a resolution or how you do it, but I would, I, I, on behalf of the foundation, we are ready to accept it. And I hope the city is the same position, ready to accept.
Make a motion.
Second. You're making a motion to accept the 1.5 million dollar grant from USDA and including the city of South Potter Island's 20% match?
Yes.
Ken, you second it? Is there any other discussion?
I wanted, I just wanted to say, I didn't, last time we were, when Mr. Frankie did the presentation the other day, I didn't thank Randy. Cause I know after, when this first started, Randy was down there a couple of times with us, looking at the building, crawling in the crawl spaces. I know that the mayor wasn't mayor then, but we brought him in there to look at it as a contractor and he was volunteering some time.
We've made tremendous progress in this last year.
Well, it was a whole bunch of people.
And I have to thank the board, the commission, the mayor, the city manager, everybody getting together and realizing that this is actually a hugely important project. And it's one that we don't wanna slip by, that we want to put on, in the ground and, and have available for everybody that comes to the island.
That was a great project. Started off looking for gun ca, a home for gun cases.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It passes unanimously and we'll get Nikki to draw up whatever needs to be drawn up for the EDA. Okay? Thank you. All right, since we pulled items 6.2, we'll go to 6.3, which is discussion and possible action to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Hanson's Professional Services for additional services related to the wind and water sports venue biological assessment and the United States Army Corps of Engineer permitting. Christina.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Christina Burka, Shoreline Director. This would allow for us to update and do our mitigation plan for the project. And Polly Novega from Hanson, our project managers here, if you have any questions.
Motion to approve. Second.
All right, anybody else have any questions?
Yes, I do. So have we worked out all the kinks that have been the problem that we had held off on this when we tabled it? Like is the seller extending the lease and?
Well, what, what's been decided is that we're not gonna push for the larger parking lot right now and we're just gonna push what we have kind of an agreement with the, a loose interpretation of agreement and where we were on the last middle. And we're just gonna proceed with that rather than trying to restart the wheel over. And so this is a much smaller amount.
But the seller is willing to extend.
Yeah, we, we, yeah. It's not a seller.
It's not a seller, it's a lease.
I'm sorry, the land, the owner is what I meant.
Yeah, we had a positive.
Been working all day, so sellers on my brain.
We, we had a positive meeting in within last week.
So what's the timetable now?
It was a six-month, uh, agree, or extension.
By, by going to what we kind of agreed to, the estimated timeline is, is how long on, with Army Corps?
We are estimating right now completion of the project, end of construction, 11 to 16 months.
Of the project? To start construction or, or already?
And construction.
To end construction? Yes. So it's a much faster timeline by not trying to make the parking lot bigger.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I'm hesitant, but.
I just, it's a voted approved project, so.
The venue tech, what are you hesitant about?
Maybe it's time to cut our losses and find another spot. I don't know. I mean, I just, I have no confidence in this at this point, but.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, we'll move to item number 6.4, which is discussion and action on the final layout of Sea Island Circle improvements partially funded under the Coastal Management Program, CMP Cycle 26. Christina.
This is just to give you the final layout so we can move forward. Big changes from the preliminary layout that were reviewed a couple of months ago included, we reduced the square footage of the impervious cover around the restrooms in the changing area. On the exit way or entryway, we made it, we're gonna change it to pavers instead of concrete, again, just to reduce the impervious cover. And so we're still working with our current engineers on our white cap circle project for the design of the restrooms. We'd really like to, uh, we're gonna be, gain construction on our white cap circle project this Monday. And so we're really looking forward to continuing those restroom designs across our accesses so that we have a uniform look. And this was reviewed last week at Shoreline and they recommended approval.
Okay. What's the budget on this one?
Our grant was, is for $120,000, so a little bit less than the last time. Minimum match of $80,000.
And when are you thinking y'all will get started on this?
Well, we're still working on the restroom design, so it'll, will probably take a little cup, a couple more months. Our grant agreement will need to add, most likely ask for an extension, but we're moving forward. And this is just one of the checkpoints for our grant to approve final design.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. All right. On 6.5, which is discussion and possible action to approve the first reading of an ordinance 22-04, mending chapter 11 by adding sections 11-300 and 11-301, prohibiting the renting, leasing or subleasing of any swimming pool or spa without the renting or leasing of an overnight stay in districts A, B-12 and E. Okay, so a little background, do what? Uh, B-2, I'm sorry, B-2. A, B-2 and E. A little background in this is that there is, the, the internet is, you know, and all these companies are very disruptive and they like to come out of the box with new ideas. And we have a new app out called Swimply. And it's where an individual can put his pool up for rent by the hour to parties, to individuals, to whatever it might be in residential areas. Not the house, but just the pool. Which seems a little weird because, A, you know, we don't have a place to go to the bathroom, that sort of thing. There's a lot of other weird stuff with it. We have already had, you know, this month already, we've had 10 pool noise complaints. About 25% of our, 20% of our, our noise complaints are related to pool noise area. And I just wanted to see if the city wanted to try to get ahead of, um, a potential issue or we can, you know, decide not to do anything. It's kinda up to the board. So we open it up for discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve, then we can give it a discussion.
Second.
Does anyone have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I do. I'm, I just, I would have thought that maybe this would have been something we could have thrown in for the property management people to be looking at and working on as we're waiting to hear back from them. And I just, before mandating something, um.
Well, we're, we're restricting, not mandating.
I, I don't, I, I'm not in favor of this. I think it's gonna be very hard to enforce. And I think, like, if I own a property and I have a swimming pool and I wanna have my family or friends over, or they, they say, hey, can we have a party at your place? I should be able to do that.
That's not, that's not what this is doing. This is where a stranger pays someone 50 bucks to go use their pool for an hour.
It's their swimming pool. It's their private property and I believe that they can do what they want.
If your neighbor's doing that and they're using the bathroom somewhere.
How are you gonna enforce that? Now people are gonna be having pool parties and you're gonna have neighbors.
You're gonna find out on the, the app.
It's private property rights and you're restricting people's private property rights. And I think, I, I'm not in favor of this.
Well, the private property rights I, I agree with, but when it overextends to affecting the property rights of other individuals that have property too.
We're not having a problem here. I looked on that app and there's one swimming pool in this area. The others are 25 miles away. I just, um, we're not even enforcing everything we have on the books. I think this is gonna be difficult. It's gonna cause problems. I'm not in favor of it. It's a violation of private property rights, in my opinion.
So, glad you brought this. This is a, I think this is, um, shows foresight and we're getting ahead of this. This isn't a private property right thing. This is commercialization of private property. And when I buy a house in a residential area, I expect, I have certain expectations for my family. And we have a lot of issues right now on the island. And this is because we're behind right, the eight ball on a lot of them with the VRM operators. I don't need a group to come to me to tell me what's right. This is, we're seeing this all over the state. People are putting, starting to put in.
I disagree with that. I talked to the governmental affairs people.
You're in, you're in the rental business, of course you do.
I'm not in the rental business. I'm in real estate sales is what I do. I talk to Texas Realtors.
A broker for a rental company?
I'm not involved in the running of it. I don't get.
But you're the broker for a rental company.
It doesn't, that, that doesn't have anything to do with that, Joe. I talked to the governmental affairs people at Texas Realtors. They say this is not an issue anywhere that they've heard about. I, I think we're, I'm just not in favor of it.
If it's not, if it's not an issue, it won't be an issue then, right?
Well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna agree. So it does, I mean, y'all all, all, sounds like you're gonna vote for it, but not in favor of it, because it is a violation of private property rights.
I don't think it's a violation of private property. I think this is looking after the residents and the people that choose to call this place home. And they have rights and they're getting neglected. And as, you know, with the, the way properties are being rented now, we are behind the eight ball. A lot of things have to be addressed. And this is one of them.
Well, we spent a lot of money.
This is where it starts. And I, I have 100% faith in enforcement. We've got a great police department. We've got a great environmental health department. I know, I know they can get this done. I have no doubt in my mind.
Just speaking my opinion like you're speaking yours.
Mayor? Yes, Ken?
Let me address. I'm sorry?
I said you haven't spoken yet, so go right ahead.
I wanna address this to, to legal. When you talk about violation, violate, you said violating individual rights or property rights. Ed, where, where do, where do we stand on that?
I feel fine about this being valid. Basically, even under the current ordinances, commercial activity.
Even under current ordinances, commercial activity is prohibited in some of these zones, so I, um, I don't, I'm not concerned about a violation of property rights and prohibiting someone from renting a pool commercially in a residential area by the hour. There's a big distinction between that and short-term rental of a property where for overnight stays.
Well, I mean, we don't want, we don't wanna start renting hotel rooms by the hour either, so you know.
And what would be next? Renting your kitchen or renting your, I mean, it's just, it could, it could go on, but I'm, I'm, I'm good with it being valid and to answer your question.
It's a question. So if a hotel here in town wanted to start renting by the hour, you're gonna restrict them from doing that?
If you notice the districts, B-2, E and A.
Hotel, commercialized business? Those are residential businesses.
We didn't get to the beachfront. We didn't get to certain areas because we're just trying to keep the residential areas.
I'm, I'm just saying that when you mentioned that about the hotels renting by the hour, if they wanted to, you're gonna tell them they can't.
Well, actually, some of the, some of the hotels already do that.
If we have hotels that are renting by the hour, I'm sure we'll have a different program in place that, that they do in certain other neighborhoods when they have that type of issue. issue. I'm sure the police will be very, very aware of the situation, so. Go ahead, Kim.
Mayor, just, just like I'm, I'm going to beat a dead horse to death, but you know, from Friday to Sunday, I, the calls I fielded and I see Sergeant Schultz here and he was the end of two or three of my phone calls. And I, I just, in, in especially these, these districts and the parking, you rent the pool for five or 10 people to come over and have a birthday party, but you, you get a pool and you rent it for 50 people. Where are they going to park? Where are they physically going to park? Sergeant can attest to what we had this weekend. We had them on the sidewalks and the yards. We had, they were everywhere. Ken and I had to move a boat trailer yesterday and I couldn't get to it because there's parked, there's a lot, a vacant lot that on, and we couldn't get to it. Everybody's parked there because they're partying across the street. But I think that what, what y'all alluded to is correct. It's not a big problem right now, but with the internet service and this new service they're offering, it can be very much a problem. I mean, I'm already, all of us are getting calls about the parties and the noise from residents. A lot of, used to be residential houses that converted to short-term rental properties and the quality of life, this affects our quality of life. I have property rights to, I have private, private rights to have a peaceful existence on our island.
Well, and a big part of it is the way I look at it is health and safety. First of all, if I had a swim, if I had a swimming pool, I would never rent it out by the hour because it probably going to cost me more to clean it and service it and whatever. And again, where are they going to go to the bathroom? What are they doing with their trash?
Where are they parking?
Where are they parking, et cetera? I mean, there's all sorts of bad deals that come out of just renting a portion of your house by the hour, or a portion of your backyard by the hour.
It's a health and safety issue.
Yeah, it is. It most definitely is. So anyway, well, we have a motion and we have a second. Is it all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. All right. Now we're going to move to 6.6, which is, I'll let Mayor Pro Tim take over and I'm going to go and Joe is going to leave. So we'll let you all discuss this and have a great day. Carrie, you got it?
Item 6.6, discussion and possible action to approve the SPI Holiday Sandcastle Village special event permit for one year.
Hello, I'm Sandy Fee Lucinda Wierenga. Sandcastle Island, Inc. is the name of our nonprofit who, we're running the Sandcastle Village. And I would ask you if we can keep our tent because without the tent, we cannot, we can't keep going, can't maintain the existing sculptures and improve them and build new sculptures, which is what we would very much like to continue doing. We average about 750 visitors each and every day at the village. These are people who are not having to pay anything, but they do, they donate voluntarily. And we use that money to build more new sculptures, to hold sand camp, free sand castle lessons for people. We are going to be a major sponsor in Sandcastle Days this year because of the money that we've gotten from the village. We do not ask for anything from the city. Louise is very generously providing us with the space and the tent and people love it. We've had very little vandalism. We have a full-time guy who goes every day and fixes things. As soon as somebody knocks something, we, we fix it. And we feel like this is a wonderful attraction right in the middle of the, not only the entertainment district, but we're in the art district. And this is art. If you haven't been by there in a while, please do because we've got new sculptures all the time. We'd have a new one right now, except I wasn't sure what was going to happen with our tent. So we're sort of holding until we find out if we still have a tent. But does anyone have any questions about the village?
I was just, I'm pleased that you're keeping count because I was really surprised with the number of people. That's a lot of people.
People counter.
I mean, I go by there and I see people going and coming, so that's good.
Yeah. It really, you know, I think people are so happy that it's something on the island that's free. This is a little walkthrough of the village, if you haven't been there recently. We are also very interested in building community and we've done that by including the names of all of our local grads the last three years. We do Valentines every year for small donations. We'll do, you know, custom Valentines. We've done wedding proposals there. It's, it's, it's a fun thing. And as you can see, it's all promoting South Padre Island. There are all these places, you can have your picture taken and they all say, "South Padre Island." And it's sand, it's, it's what we have here on the island, so.
So thanks for all you do. It is certainly an attraction for our island, not just as this location, but all over. Now, who provides the insurance in the event? Because it is a temporary canopy. In the event something happens, it blows off, there's a parking lot, there's a Ferris wheel, there's people. Who, do you have an insurance policy, a liability policy?
We did when we started last year and I wish I could remember, but somebody told me, oh, you don't need that. It's covered by Louise or it's covered by the city or I don't remember what they told me, but they, they said, don't worry about renewing. Now, if this is an issue, we certainly can get insurance again. We, we were qualified for it before we can qualify again.
I'm sure that Louise or, well, it's actually the property owner, not Louise or, but the property owner has a policy, but that's to protect his interests. So you probably need to get one to protect your interests as well. And how long do you anticipate that you'll need this temporary structure? Any idea when something more permanent can be erected so we're not having to come back to us every year?
I, I'm not really privy to what goes on with, with the Louise people. They have mentioned to me before that they do have designs and ideas for a, a permanent structure. I'm, I'm not, like I said, not privy to all that, but we certainly would, would love a permanent structure there.
Right.
And would be able to perhaps even help with the design and so on.
So Debbie Huffman's name is on this. Debbie, do you have any comments you'd like to add?
Just going to say about the insurance. If it is a, if it is a special event permit, like it has been in the past, we would need to have the insurance in place and some information on the temporary structure or maybe something on the timeframe of when, of something more permanent would be there, I would think, to, to make it go through as a, a special event permit. But the, I think the insurance, listing the city as an insurer would be a, would be a must.
So just to be very clear on this, it's not Louise or Tequila's or anybody, it's the SPI redevelopment group that owns all that property. That's another entity. So gentlemen, Al MacAllen. So I, I, I would think before we do anything, we need to get that insurance policy in place, make sure we're covered. And I don't, maybe we can approve it, subject to you getting a copy to the, your endorsement, a deck page, let us know you got the insurance and then we'll move forward. But I think we can go ahead and if the council wants to approve this, go ahead, subject to you providing us with the deck page or endorsement. Okay? You okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah. Anybody else have any questions? Well, we're, you know, we're three and a half, four months out from holiday season and to disrupt it now would be disrupting part of our island because we are sand. And these exhibits, I, I think conservatively, what, 47,000? I mean, it was just an incredible amount of people went through that thing. And if you're looking for a motion, I'd still move.
I'll second.
Okay. We've got a motion and second. I want to also say, I don't want my name anywhere on something that says, "We're going to kill the Sandcastle Holiday, Sandcastle Event." So I'm, I'm definitely in favor as well. So any more questions, comments?
So just to be clear what the motion is.
Yeah.
It's that we're, a motion to approve.
It would be an extension of the permit for one year, subject to obtaining the insurance.
Insurance policy.
Insurance policy.
Get right on that.
Yeah. Debbie will be advised of that, okay?
All right.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any ayes? Nope. All in favor? I mean, you won, great.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your support.
Thanks, thanks for all you do. And we're looking forward to a great holiday season with that Sandcastle Village, so.
We're going to, we're going to do Sandcastle Days even bigger this year because we have a, more of a budget and some sculptors are going to hang around afterwards. And we also would like to expand on the Sandcastle Trail. Do you know of anybody, we will not charge your business to, to do a sand sculpture. We just want a box built. And that goes for the museum, too. If we can do one there. I know that big box is going away, but a smaller, more manageable box would be, would be wonderful and we'd be happy to provide a sculpture for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. And that gets to item seven, adjournment. Thank everybody for coming out.